I'd like to call to order the meeting of the King George County School Board. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence or kneel? Thank you. All right. Yeah, that's what I was going to do. All right, let's have the ones who just led us in the pledge, if you want to come forward and say a few words. Tell us who you are and why you're here. Why don't you get a little closer to the microphone there and put it down a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
I'm Ava and I am Brussels and I am the member of Assistant Elementary Schools Drama Club. I'm playing Dorothy in the school's production of The Wizard of Oz. Students in fourth and fifth grade get the opportunity to join Drama Club and put together a play for the night at the Arts at Seawest.
Hello, I am Zane and I am a part of Running Club from Seawest Elementary. This is... This is something like about how we do stuff and... Running Club helps us build lung and muscle endurance through various running exercises. We learn how to properly warm up and cool down to avoid injuries as well proper, as well as proper running forms.
And how many are in the Running Club?
Well, we're split between two groups, gold and blue. I would say probably forty-eight.
Wow, that's wonderful. Well, thank you very much. Now, how many were in the Drama Club? Sorry, I didn't ask.
I'm not sure about that. But we have, everybody has a part in the play. And we have four narrators and there's a lot of, there's small parts and big parts, like we have, we call it the big five, where those are the ones we have the big parts. And then you have more of like SMM parts and all that. So I'm not incredibly sure how many there are, but I'm sure, like, there's no backstage crew. Everybody has like a saying part in that.
Good. Are you going to stick with drama, you think?
I think it's really fun. I like that it's, it's like kind of set in stone, but it's also like you can have improv where like somebody says something random, you can kind of just go off of it.
Wow, that's interesting. Well, thank you again. Let's give another hand. All right, um, let's, recognition, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much for the opportunity. As many of you may know or may not know, that February in the Commonwealth is considered School Board Appreciation Month. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank our school board members for what I know they're figuring out very quickly is a very challenging, many, many hours, much, much effort is involved in taking on this responsibility. So I can't say enough in the short time that I've worked with many of you, how much I appreciate all of the effort that goes into running our school division and making sure that we provide leadership that is going to take our children to great places. So I certainly appreciate each and every one of you. We certainly do have something for you this evening that we would like to offer you. So if I could first have Mrs. Hock. And next up, Mrs. Hoover. Our Vice Chairman, Mr. Rolls. And finally, our Chairman, Mr. Bush. If we could give our school board members a round of applause.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, public comments, do we have any?
Wait a minute, we have disability awareness, Ms. Howard.
Oh, I'm sorry, disability awareness, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to present this, this evening. This year, we started our very first official Disability Awareness Month contest. It's a poster contest. So we were able to send this flyer out to schools in the fall. It was open to pre-K to 12th graders, so everyone in the county was able to participate if they wanted to. And then our CAC Community Committee, they judged the entries. And we are here this evening to honor Ms. Genevieve Sinner. She was the winner. And this year, our theme was Determined to Succeed. So we have this beautiful poster that we're, we're presenting to her this evening. And this is her artwork that she entered and created. And it was just, it's just beautiful. So in addition, we, I have cards for each one of you to have a copy. So we're going to do this every year as long as I'm around. And we have one of these to put in all the schools and at the school board office. So Genevieve, if we could give her a round of applause. I've really had the pleasure of speaking to her tonight and just what a lovely, wonderful, creative person she is. She has a few things to say.
I was brought here today to share my reasons for creating my poster titled Determined to Succeed, which I drew for the first disability poster contest. I'm so honored to be given this opportunity and to share my thoughts behind it. My biggest inspiration has been my older brother, who has autism. Throughout my life, he has always been there for me, even when he tries to get on my nerves. When he was in school, he was bullied. He was bullied because he was different. Some people with disabilities may stand out more than others, but it doesn't make them different from you and I. My brother learned to ignore these disrespectful people to the best of his ability. He made sure adults and his friends treated him like any normal human being. Every disability is different, some worse than others. On my poster, I included children with these different disabilities. A child in a wheelchair, a child who is deaf, a child with anxiety, a child with a service dog. Children and adults with disabilities have a voice that deserve to be heard and shouldn't have to feel different from being themselves. Everyone in this world isn't perfect. Not one person should have to feel that they don't deserve a normal life because of their disabilities. People with disabilities are just like you and I. I want more people in this world to understand that. We all deserve to be heard. We shouldn't deserve to feel different.
We're going to do a picture? Thank you. All right, wonderful. Let's watch it. Good job. Well, we're very proud of you, Genevieve. Thank you. And I'm sure your brother is too. All right, moving on, let's public our employee comments. We have some? We have one? All right, Anthony Stats, am I pronouncing that right? Okay, good. Well, again, we're glad that you're here. If you would please give us what district you're from, the voting district, and then also, limited to three minutes, once you start. Thank you.
I'm from the Shiloh District. I'm coming to the board today as a former student. I graduated last May. And this past year, I really had the opportunity to reflect on my time throughout the King George School system. And it's very sad to report, there's a lot that needs to be fixed. And I think the board is very well aware of that. We're down twenty-nine teachers. And I think that I definitely saw the impact through going through a middle school and high school. We are seeing that when I speak to people my age, eighteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds, who cannot read and write on a twelfth-grade reading level, it is impacting us. And not just that, but school closures that impacted us. I think we're still feeling, feeling the ramifications of that. And so as we're entering budget season, I asked the board to reflect on that. Reflect on all the things that we need to do at the county to make sure that we're not leaving our kids behind. Making sure that we're giving them the tools of success, you know, reading, writing, all of these great things that, you know, we may just take for granted on an everyday basis, but really are the pathways to success. One other thing I wanted to speak about is, I know we're down twenty-nine teachers and that's a very big hill to climb, you know, but there's two teachers that I think really need, that we need in the county. And that is a home ec teacher, teaching people how to do dishes, how to make food, how to do their own laundry. I know that may sound as a shock to you because it's very common sense, but some, you know, some people just don't have that opportunity at home. So having a teacher showing them how to do this is just very basic skills. And also in the high school, I think we need a leadership teacher. When I went through high school, we did not have one. And I think it would be a set a great example as a county to have a leadership teacher to show that, you know, the kids can also play a part, our student reps. I'm very proud of y'all. We did not have that when I was in high school. So it is a big, huge leap forward just to have student reps here. But let's make sure that those are at our school level too. Make sure we empower students and saying, hey, you're part of the process, not just a byproduct of the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any online?
Mr. Chair, can we get him to repeat his name for us? I couldn't hear.
Anthony Stats.
S-T-A.
S-T-A-A-T-S.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Stats. I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. Excellent comments. All right, do we have any changes in the agenda? No? All right, moving forward. Okay, let's begin with a presentation of the FY 2023-24 budget. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm going to jump down front and present from the vote.
Absolutely.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, before I jump into the presentation, I want to make sure I do two things. I was asked by the board to give everyone an update on the CALP tool that's used across the state to determine funding for public schools in Virginia. So if you guys have been paying close attention to the news in the past week, there was a story that came out at the beginning of last week about how all school divisions in the state were going to come up short with funding this year because there was a, there is a tool. It's called the CALP tool. It's the tool that all school divisions use in the state to determine the amount of funding that we receive from the state government. And what happened was, if you guys remember, our current governor campaigned on a platform of lowering taxes. And in that process, he relieved many of us of the grocery tax. So in that process, the grocery tax was repealed. And the CALP tool used to determine funding for public schools was not updated in the process. So the story came out at the beginning of the week that school divisions across the state of Virginia were going to be somewhere in the ballpark of about $200 million in the hole. I can tell you, since then, there's been some relatively good information that's come from the Department of Education. They certainly acknowledged the mistake initially. They did say, however, they are not the ones that can provide any type of fiscal response. The General Assembly is fully aware. And I can tell you right now, the House and Senate, as they've gone through crossover and they're talking about the bills that they're going to push forward to be approved, they're well aware of this situation and each, the Senate and the House have a plan to remedy that funding hole. So what we found out today, we had a webinar at two o'clock. The Virginia Department of Education came out with a spreadsheet. And I'm happy to say that based on their numbers, only sixty-four school divisions in the state of Virginia will have a funding shortfall based on the grocery tax miscalculation. And King George County Schools is not one of them. So we will not have a funding shortfall. So that's good news. There's also good news in the plans. Right now, there's two plans out there. First, the Senate plan is to backfill the money that those sixty-four school divisions would be short. So the Senate plan is to cover what would be lost by those sixty-four school divisions. The House plan right now is a little more complicated, but basically that's providing every school division with a certain allotment of money. So if the House plan is approved, even though we had not lost any money in the process, it looks like through the House plan, we would gain $33,000. So all in all, not bad. It was certainly not as bright of a situation at the beginning of the week, but it certainly looked better as the week progressed and certainly after the webinar that we had today. Before I move on to the funding conversation, do the board members have any questions about the CALP tool or anything of that nature?
Thanks for addressing that. Answers the question.
Yes, sir. Okay, so before I jump into the presentation that everyone can see, each school board member has a proposed budget funding book. Just want to make sure that for the, for the good of the board, we take a minute to just look at that funding book, because I know the audience members do not have that. However, familiarizing yourself with the things that are in this booklet for our school board members is certainly going to be beneficial as we begin to address questions in our community about funding of schools. So if you open your funding, your budget book, on the left-hand side, I folded there. Many of you guys have seen this so far. But basically what that is, is a comparison of our salary scale to other salary scales in the region. And again, I'm going to go through this rather quickly and just familiarize you guys with what it is. I'm not going to go into great detail on the document, other than what I have in the presentation. Working our way into the budget booklet, the first tab, the red tab at the top, is the summary presentation that I'll give here in just a moment. The following tab is state revenues. This is all the money that we receive from the state. You can see in the top left-hand corner, it starts with state revenues of $34 million. And you can see how that breaks it down into certain funding categories throughout that document. It's a really short document, three-page document, but it talks about how and from where we get money from the state. All right, it gets a little more dense. You've got, the next tab has a fifty-six-page document. And this goes into great, great detail. So if you want to get really down in the weeds on every single thing we spend money in, on, in the school division, what you can do is take a look at obviously the, the title of the department, which when you open the top, when you open it, you see Potomac Elementary School, and it breaks it down by every single category. So again, much more detail than the average person may be, may need, but certainly beneficial for the school board. Okay, turn to the next tab. It's titled Budget Builder Detail. What you'll see there is the budget builder is a conglomeration of all of the materials and things that we purchase through our departments and through each school. So the first part of that document is, I believe, three pages, front and back. Those are summary pages of all of the expenditures that you see in the, under the following tab, the budgets, the budget builder summary. So basically, that summary section, that first couple pages corresponds to summarize the document right behind it with all of the expenditures laid out. So this is really all of the stuff that's purchased through the school division or all the requests for stuff that's purchased through the school division. So again, audience, I'm sorry, I'm just familiarizing them with this document, which becomes very important. We'll jump right into the presentation in a minute. The final tab is our capital improvement plans, all of the stuff that we need to consider requesting from the Board of Supervisors. These projects are over $50,000. And the process for requesting CIP projects are, they run parallel with the budget process, but really separate in a sense. I can stop there for any questions about the budget builder and certainly can answer them whenever you guys have them at a later date as well. If you have any questions, I can answer them now about the budget builder or I can jump right into the presentation. Good?
I think we're good, although this is something we're all going to have to weed through, I think, in our own time. But thank you very much. It's very clear.
It's a lot there. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask anytime. All right, so now, King George County Schools Budget Proposal. So the first slide you're going to see here is the budget development timeline. We are already through January, so all of the things that we've done in January, January was really the month where we solicited a lot of information. We reached out to all of our stakeholder groups and we started to identify many of the needs that we were going to have in the budget this year. We're now, I can't believe it already, in February 2023. And this evening is our first preliminary draft for the 2023-24 budget. We will, this evening, I believe, have to schedule at least one work session. And the other important date is our public hearing, which is scheduled and has been advertised for our next school board meeting, February 22nd. So audience members, anybody online, if you have Anthony, you have some, some input that you'd like to provide for, for the budget process, February 27th will be the public hearing. And then we should have a, we should schedule a budget work session shortly after that. And then working through March and April and May, we would present our budget to the Board of Supervisors and hope, hope for approval during that time. Okay, so this slide, this is developing and assessing the needs in the budget process. So again, this, this is a complex process. Where we are right now, in many respects, is in that first little arrow. So myself in the middle, the superintendent, my responsibility is to present what is termed a needs-based budget to the school board and ultimately to the Board of Supervisors. So how do we determine that need? All of those other multicolored circles around the blue circle in the middle. So we've already had two community forums. We've got two more scheduled this week where we're soliciting input from our community and really painting the picture as to the state of public schools in, in King George County. If you guys remember, I gave you a long presentation, real long presentation, on the strategic plan. But again, the strategic plan is the guiding document that we use to make sure that we're moving in the correct direction in our school division. And it's most important, most important document that we access when it comes to planning for budget expenses. We've also formed a budget advisory committee. And we met our first time last week and we'll meet again next week. So we've got a diverse group of folks there. We've got school board members and Board of Supervisors members, parents, teachers, school board staff, all getting together to talk about the direction of the budget and things that we need to consider as priorities. The budget builder in the bottom left is something that I shared with you guys. That's certainly the feedback we receive from supervisors in the school division and our principals at our schools. We solicit a staff survey and make sure our staff have what they need to do their job as teachers and support staff in the school division. And then we always get and are waiting for still an update from the General Assembly and our Superintendent of Public Instruction across the state. All of that information goes into what I will present to you tonight, which is the initial draft presentation of our budget moving forward. Following your approval, we would go to the Board of Supervisors. Next slide, John. Okay, so funding in the state of Virginia is, for public schools, is really predicated on what is termed the average daily membership. So what we have to do is make a very educated guess on how many students we believe are going to attend King George County Schools next year. So we've taken a look at the last, I believe, six years there of data dating back to 2016. And based on our growth, growth is a good thing, we're predicting that 4,537 students will attend King George County Public Schools next year, which we're moving up and moving up is good. In this slide, I want to make sure that we draw our attention to, and I know this is budget season, but we do have this opportunity to, as we're talking about the number of students attending King George County Schools, we take a look at the number of students attending each of our schools. And also the capacity of each of our schools. So if you see that little table on the right-hand side, starting with King George Elementary School, the first column, the first number column, is the enrollment, the current enrollment as of January 19th at that particular school. And on the right-hand side, based on our blueprints and documentation and fire code and everything else we've been able to pull together, those are the capacities of those buildings. So I think it's a very important conversation that we continue to mature in, in King George County, that the schools that are in red right now are exceeding the capacity that they were designed to hold. Okay? And next slide, John? Okay, in the state of Virginia, again, another very important factor to how we fund schools. Yes, sir.
Previous slide, so for each of those years, we have fall and the actual spring ADM. So in terms of state funding, do they average those two or what number do they go with?
Yes, they average those two.
Okay.
Yeah, so September 30th and March, March 31st are the two dates that we, that they take the enrollment and they average them. Okay, so local composite index. Across the state of Virginia, there's 132 school divisions. Basically, the funding formula in Virginia ranks all of those school divisions based on their, the value of their property, the adjusted gross income and the, and the retail sales in that community, basically their level of affluence. And it ranks them on their ability locally to pay for public schools. The higher your LCI, state funding goes down. The lower your LCI, state funding goes up. So in King George County, our LCI is currently .3805, which in essence means that the locality should be responsible for at least 38% of the public school budget. And the, and the state would be responsible for 62% of the local budget. Now, most school divisions in the state, I would note, pay more than, towards public education than the local composite index. However, 38% is what our composite index is currently. Okay, next slide, John? All right, again, I'm not going to go over these in great detail because I did a couple meetings ago. But again, the importance of making sure that our budget aligns to our King George County School strategic plan is very important. I'm not going to read all of this, but you see the four goals. The first goal is simply investing in our employees. Making sure that we are attracting or retaining quality employees in our county is goal number one for a reason. And I'm going to go into that in greater detail. Goal number two has to do with the quality of the instruction and innovation we can provide to our students. Goal number three has to do with the context that we provide education in. How well do we collaborate with our community? How well do we engage and communicate with our, all of our stakeholders in our community? What is the backdrop of what our school division operates in? And then finally, goal four in our strategic plan is making sure that we provide a safe, secure, and healthy learning environment. Talks about the quality of our schools across the division. So those are our four goals. Everything in this budget will tie back to that. So next slide, John, thank you. Yep. Now, one of my mentors, and actually Mr. Bush met the other night, Dr. Smith, he has told me many times... He, uh, has told me many times that all budgets need to tell a story. Okay, they shouldn't just be numbers. So here's the story. Story of this budget is that teachers matter. Okay, teachers matter more than any other thing that you can apply to a quality education. It matters more than, I know Hillary doesn't like it when I say this, but, any technological innovation, uh, any facility, any instructional program. The teacher in the classroom has the greatest impact. You can even reference this through many forms of, of research. Making sure that we have qualified teachers is the backbone and strength of our school division. Uh, so you'll see much of this presentation moving forward is gonna talk about how we must make teachers our priority and how we must invest in our teachers. Next slide. All right, so again, uh, if you don't know this already, there is, uh, as important as teachers are, there is a teacher shortage across the country and most certainly in the state of Virginia. If you look over on the left-hand side, first, I'm gonna show you the current status of, uh, teacher vacancies in Virginia. So that's the yellow, uh, section. This presentation was put on, or this data was given to me by the Virginia, or excuse me, by, uh, UVA, University of Virginia, and the data is pulled from the Virginia Department of Education webpage. The vacancy rate in the state of Virginia in October of 2021 was 3.06. And one, and one year later from that, it escalated to 3.86. Now, what does that mean? What that means is that in the state of Virginia, there's 93,331 full-time teachers. If you have a vacancy rate of 3.86, which we recognized in October of 2022, that equates to 3,602 teachers that we don't have in the state of Virginia. And this is where the data for me really hit home when I heard this presentation. If these 3,602 teachers were all elementary school teachers in the Commonwealth, that means 79,256 elementary school kids do not have a teacher. If they happen to be high school students who change classes throughout the day, if they were all high school teachers, over half a million high school kids across the state of Virginia do not have a teacher in one class. So, if you move over to the right-hand side, you'll see, uh, King George County School Teacher Vacancy in white. Now, when I was listening to this data, uh, it was all, uh, school divisions in the state of Virginia, and unfortunately, they showed us a table and King George County Schools kinda has the dubious distinction of being in the bottom 20 as far as the highest vacancy rates in the state of Virginia. So you can see our vacancy rate compared to the state is much higher. Our vacancy rate in October 2021 was 8.17. It's escalated to 9.12. And again, going through rather quickly this time, we have 319 teachers in Virgi- in King George County. 9.12 vacancy rate, as Anthony pointed out earlier, equates to 29 teachers. Mrs. Zirsky talked to me a little bit earlier. We're down to 24 now. Is that right? Okay, we're making improvement, but nevertheless, that's still a very large number. King George County students, if we don't have 29 teachers that are working in classrooms right now, and I, and I want to take just a moment to thank all of the wonderful people that have stepped up to the plate, that have come out to be long-term subs, that have come into our classrooms, uh, to provide any level of instruction that they can to our students. Right now, it is, is most certainly greatly appreciated. Uh, but nevertheless, without 29 qualified teachers in classrooms right now, it's 638 elementary school students in our county, uh, if they were all high, elementary students, that would not have a teacher. And nearly 4,000 of our high school students, now you're gonna say, wait a minute, our high school only holds 1,500 kids. Well, what that means is that a high school student would have multiple classes throughout their day, that they would not have a qualified teacher. Okay, I think that's pretty impactful and, and pretty important as we consider how we, uh, focus on funding our schools moving forward. Next slide, John? Okay, so part of the story here, I don't think it's a coincidence, uh, that King George has one of the highest vacancy rates, uh, in the state. Again, top 20, which in fact, even more detail, we were, we were 12th lowest in the state. So out of 132 school divisions, we ranked 120th as far as our vacancy rate. Now, you'll take a look over here in the blue, on the blue column on the left-hand side, which you'll see is a first-year teacher salary. Uh, going into this, this year, comparing ourselves to all of the counties that we share a border with, we rank fifth with a salary of $46,419. I can tell you that in my time in King George County, and I'm sure many have more historical data than I have, uh, we have traditionally been about comfortable with being third in that group. Stafford is, is a entirely different animal in itself, uh, working its way up the 95 corridor and having to compete with your Prince Williams and your Fairfax's. Spotsy is also growing at a very rapid rate, but King George has traditionally fell at third in that, you know, progression. Currently, we set fifth and I can tell you that we lost teachers because of it. Uh, we, we lost teachers to, uh, those surrounding counties that, that I know by name. I have a note down there. I know everybody in the audience doesn't have this, but, uh, that handout that I have in your fold, in your, uh, budget book really goes through all of the salaries that you can compare, uh, with all of those surrounding localities and where we rank. Many of those localities made great gains in their teacher salaries last year and outpaced us in many respects. Next slide. Okay, this, uh, scenario here is, uh, I should say that in the biennial budget that we received from last year, the state is requiring, it may change, but currently is requiring, uh, localities give a 5% salary increase. So if we were to, you know, all, all rising ships, right, you know, this rising, what's the saying? Rising? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hawk. If everyone was to give a 5% salary increase, again, we would find ourselves falling in fifth place, uh, which certainly is, is, uh, not where we like to be when we are all competing for a supply of teachers that is not gonna, uh, satisfy the entire region. So I think, uh, the message here is that we really must be more competitive with our teacher salary. Next slide. Okay, this is some regional data from 2021, 2022, and it's very tough to see there, uh, but below, and the font that really didn't come out here in the presentation. I'm gonna go over here and touch it. This is King George right here, and that horrible font. Uh, you see our, our other, uh, school divisions in the region. And what you're looking at as far as data is concerned is, uh, first-year teacher salary and, and teacher salary after five years. You can see in 2021 and 2022, uh, we're keeping company with really the, the bottom five. Caroline, Fredericksburg, Essex, King and Queen and, and King George County. So, uh, when we're talking about a teacher shortage, I can tell you in the folks that, in, with the conversations I've had with the folks that are attending job fairs, when it used to be where we would interview candidates and try to attract them to our school division and they would certainly try to sell themselves, because there's such a shortage now, we, we are interviewing, they're asking us about whether or not they wanna take a job with us and, and they're very, uh, uh, marketable. So, so it's, it's just an entirely different environment. We must be more competitive with our teacher salaries. And even in that top five there from two years ago, as we saw on the previous slide, Fredericksburg's already, uh, outpaced us. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, part of this budget presentation is traditionally been our, our, our staff survey. So in the staff survey, we ask our employees if they have the equipment, supplies, programs and services that they need to fulfill their responsibilities. So what this data shows you in these pie graphs is that nine out of 10 employees in our school division currently for equipment, ser- uh, supplies and programs and services say that we meet their needs as, as far as the stuff that they need to do their job. Below, uh, in this survey, teachers had the opportunity to respond with a, with a narrative, you know, they could type in a response, uh, beyond just agree or disagree. So what I did was I sorted those comments based on where they fell in our four, uh, strategic plan goals. So if you remember, our first strategic plan goal was employee investment development, and then it goes down the line. You see those four goals there. 57% of the comments that came for our teachers had to do with investing in them, investing in our employees and developing our employees. So the comments were, please take a look at our salaries, please figure out ways how to professionally develop us. 57% of the time in that survey. All right, I reached out to our professional teacher organizations, King George Education Foundation on the secondary level and the Virginia Professional Educators, uh, on the, uh, elementary level. And I won't read those, but, uh, basically what they say in so many words is the same thing that you saw in the survey. Make sure that we take care of our teachers and our staff. So both of our professional organizations are, uh, saying the same things that we're saying about making sure that we provide for our, uh, teachers and our employees in the school division. Okay, so coming out of the gates, uh, in order for us to be more competitive, our proposal, uh, to the school board and to the Board of Supervisors is, uh, to number one, make sure that we provide the state-required 5% salary increase for everyone as the state has requested. But more importantly, we're gonna take a look at our teacher scale and provide a 7.17% increase with the step. Both of those include a step. And I know that's kind of an odd number, but basically what that number is gonna do is if you look over there on the left-hand side, that puts us back into the respective place that we belong as far as our regional salaries. Um, and this is under the assumption, I should add, that the other school divisions only provide a 5% increase. And I can tell you that some of them may, but I, I, we've already seen it, we've already taken a close look at Stafford and, and Stafford is, is again, taking a big leap. But I do believe that last year, many of the other school divisions took an enormous leap forward and may only be able to do a 5% this year is, is some of the information I'm getting. Uh, so again, we need to start attracting those teachers back into the school division. It's gonna start with the salary that we can provide, uh, our teachers. So, next slide, John? All right, so what does this mean for the revenue summary? So again, we put all of this, this is what I was talking about at the beginning of the presentation before we dived into the, uh, PowerPoint presentation. Uh, this is the information we get from the Calc tool that comes from the state. So what we do is, uh, put in the average daily membership that we believe we're gonna have. And what this Calc tool does that comes from the Department of Education is it provides, um, these figures from the funding sources and school board members, you guys will have this information in the revenue section of your budget builder. So quickly, um, on the left-hand side, you'll see fiscal year 23. That's what we were approved for this year. Uh, you'll see projected fiscal year 24 in the middle. That's our budget request. And on the right-hand side, you will see the difference. So quickly, I won't go through all those numbers, but the difference in state revenue is a little over 1.1 million. State revenue, other state revenue, which comes in the form usually of, of some unique grants, uh, is gonna decrease a little bit. We think our federal and other federal funds and other revenue, right now, we're predicting to remain the same, which at this point is gonna require a local, uh, contribution of 3.4 million. Next slide, John? Now, where does that break down? I think that's important. That's a large number, 3.4 million, but what is, what does it mean? What does it break down? This is where it breaks down. In the left-hand side, you'll see teacher and staff compensation. So the increase in the teacher salary and the support staff salary, as I described before, is an increase of 2.2 million. That's, that's the lion's share of that request. Health insurance premium, we're estimating at a 3% increase, 114,000. The budget builder request that you guys have in your document currently sits at $1 million as far as added expenses. And then the additional staffing request right now comes in at 1.6 million currently. Next slide shows our requested staffing positions right now. I won't go through all of those. You guys have that in your budget builder book. But it most certainly, if there's any questions on any of them, I certainly can address them. Okay, next slide, John? Okay, uh, the state often, uh, well, not often, it always, uh, provides that budgeted money by appropriation category. And, uh, you know, many of our Board of Supervisors members have often talked about appropriation categories. Uh, so what we did here was made sure that we provided the funding difference by the appropriation category. You'll see, again, very similar to the last slide, on the left-hand side, you'll see fiscal year 22, 23, which is the current budgeted year. You'll see the request in the middle. And then on the far right-hand side, you'll see the difference. And you'll see again, that the lion's share of this money comes from instruction. Instruction is about 80% of our budget and it is where our teacher salaries sit. What's important to recognize at the bottom is the local funding or the, uh, and also the local composite index. Last year, the school division, or excuse me, the locality provided 21.1 million. And that equated, based on the, the find, final funding formula, to supporting a local composite index of 38.5, which means the locality funded 38.5% of the school budget. Currently, as the budget sits, we would be requesting, um, an additional 3 million, which is 24,562 dollars, 940, 562,942 dollars, and the LCI for that is 40.4%.
Dr. Boyd, if we could go back just one slide?
Yes, sir.
Curious, because I know, uh, it was a request last year as well to try to get a CTE coordinator, but now we're calling it a CTE specialist. And I think last year was a six-figure estimated total compensation. Now it's, it's less. So has that job description changed from last year or we just figured we could get somebody for less than previously thought?
Say it again?
Okay, I mean, something different?
Dr. Boyd, can I ask a question too? Going to the last slide, when you're talking about the, um, LCI and the 40.4%, last year was 38.5 that we were asking. Just curious with the other divisions that are surrounding us, is, um, is that near what they requested, which was over their LCI also? Is that, how much was it similar? We stayed, um, close to it. Did they simply then, um, ask much more?
I'll see if I can get that information for you for the exact figure that the other school divisions around us, uh, contributed towards the LCI. I know traditionally, most school division, most localities pay more than the LCI, but it's an excellent question. I'll see if I can get that before we move forward.
Second question. I'll let you finish first. There's one at the end. Go ahead and finish.
Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, next slide, John? Okay, all right, we're working our way towards the end. So again, um, the story here and, and what we need to make sure that we consider. I know there's a lot of important things as we move forward in public education, but I think our budget priority must be teachers. The need is certainly there. Uh, if we look at supply and demand of the teaching profession across the state, uh, the demand is far outreaching the supply right now, which is making it very difficult to attract and retain qualified teachers. Uh, we need to make sure that we do what we can in order to support a, a salary that's going to attract teachers to our school division. Uh, so again, back to the slide I, I began with as far as telling the, the story. Research, research suggests and really many others would suggest that among all other school-related factors, teachers matter the most. Uh, so we need to do what we can to make sure that is our budget priority moving forward. And again, the only other thing I would add is that, uh, before we conclude the budget conversation this evening, we do need to decide when we could have a, a budget work session. And, uh, I'll pause now for, for questions. Chairman Bush?
Uh, any of my other fellow board members have a question before I? Talk, did you have one by any chance?
Not currently, thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, just a general, general one. Um, those other divisions that surround us, we dropped and in terms of our position, especially in terms of the salaries and so on, they obviously then went up, um, whether it's because their LCI, they ask more or whatever. Um, I'm assuming though that there was a cost for that. In other words, this year, and I guess that's what you're assuming too, they may just have to just do the 5%. They can't do maybe what they did last year. I'm curious, a couple of things. Did they also last year kind of look at almost sacrificing some of the things in order to raise those teacher salaries? Or did they just simply still ended up with the same levels of the rest and then just simply then increased the teacher salary? I'm wondering if they did what we're looking at doing this year?
That's a good question. I can certainly dig back into maybe some of their budget presentations and see if it was a, a sacrifice where That's a good question. I can certainly dig back into maybe some of their budget presentations and see if it was a sacrifice where we might not get all of the stuff that we need in a given year at the expense of making sure that we cover teacher salaries. So certainly can look back and see if that was the approach for them. As, as you can see in the document, they certainly did not. Some of the teacher salaries in some school divisions went up almost 18%
Exactly.
year over year. You know, one that's noteworthy and one that we never fell behind was Westmoreland County. Westmoreland County raised their teacher's salary scale across the board, 10.71%, so almost 11% increase for everyone on that pay scale there. And we lost teachers because of it.
Last question, which relates to this first one, is that if we, hopefully, will get what we're asking for next year, I'm assuming we may be in a similar situation as some of those other divisions around us in that we probably will just be able, we won't be able to continue the process of going beyond that 5% like we're hoping to do this year, which we probably should have thought more about doing last year. But then, because we're going to probably have to catch up on some of this other stuff that we may be, sacrifice is the wrong word, prioritizing differently. And we're going to have to kind of shift that a little bit in order to, I'm assuming this will happen in order to compensate for what we're sacrificing for this year. Does that make any sense?
That makes sense, yes, sir.
So you agree that that will probably be the case?
But yes, that's certainly a possibility. Yeah. And, and again, I mean, we're going out having these conversations with the community right now. We certainly need the community's support. We need to make sure that we make sure that everyone understands this message. And I, and I know that it's coming from the school division and I don't want to discount many of the needs that we have as a, as a growing locality. We are very much a, a, a growing community. But with that growth, there's responsibility for taking care of the, most certainly in this example, the children of the school division, but, but all of the services that we need to provide in our, in our county. So I've had a lot of conversations with folks in the community, Board of Supervisors members. And again, we'll continue to have those conversations to make sure that this isn't a request that we take lightly, but one that we think is going to put our community in the best place moving forward.
And I think one comment that's really valuable for all of King George to realize is that one slide that you showed, that 90% of our teachers are satisfied with the materials and the instructional materials that they have available to them. It doesn't mean there's always can be improvement, but that's a good thing. And then the reality is, is okay, all the best instructional materials in the world does not compensate if we have the teachers leaving because they're not being focused on. It's like, we've done a very good job in the past focusing on instructional materials, good quality programs, but we need to now focus on our teachers. And I think that that one slide that you showed, they are satisfied, 90% of them, with what they have to do their job. The one thing is key, even with them and with us as a community, is we kind of keep some of those teachers and we have to be able to recruit others of high quality. Anyway, it's just a comment. Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
You have a question about, you mentioned wanting to get a work session scheduled. And just by, we have a question for that. I'd like to know what our goal is for that session, because I know for context, last year, it did seem all that different from regular school board meetings. So what do you see that as being different or the purpose of that being?
So as I understand it, we're required to have one. We are also required to have a, a public hearing. So it, it would be my desire, I think, to have the work session after the public hearing to make sure that we can include that insight that we're receiving from, from anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the school division into our work session. But as we move forward and we continue to have community forums, I can also provide that insight to you. And I think it would provide us an opportunity, I know this is a dense book, but to take a deeper dive in the next couple of weeks into a lot of the material in here. And any insight that you guys want to give me in that work session as far as how to move forward with this budget before we present it to the Board of Supervisors would be greatly appreciated in that work session. So that's kind of in my mind, what I thought we would get out of that requirement.
So, board members, we might even right now, but before we maybe get our calendars out, I mean, let's do this right now rather than waiting. But before we do that, then what's the date that you're presenting to the Board of Supervisors? You have that, right? Or you don't?
Not have that date yet, but it's, it's typically in March.
Right.
I need to have that budget to them by March 1. So our, it's a tight window, our, but our, what did I say? February 22 is our public input. So it would have to be after that. It's tight.
All right. With that in mind, there's only 28 days in February. So my fellow board members, if you could get your calendars out right now, let's look at this right now. I'm available. It'd be nice, I know this is difficult because the public hearing will be on the 27th, which is also the regular 22nd, sorry, my fault, the 22nd. And so that means that we have basically that week, Tuesday, no, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, and then Monday of the following week. So of those three days, Thursday, the 24th, Friday, excuse me, Thursday, the 23rd, Friday, the 24th, or Monday, the 27th, or Tuesday, the 28th. I'm available on any one of those if we need to. What about the rest of you? Friday's best for you, Ms. Hoover. Ms. Hawk, what's best for you?
I can do any of those dates.
Mr. Rolls?
Sorry, just a second.
Ideally, looking at the 24th, Friday, the 24th.
I don't see a conflict there. It should be okay.
Okay, so we're all right. We need to check with Ms. Gonzalez. But I will email her. But let's look at Friday, the 24th of February, which would be about three days after the, sorry, two days after the public hearing. And let's get a second choice in case for Ms. Gonzalez, in case that's what would be our second choice, in case the 24th will not work for her. Because I think it's important that all of us are there. So, anybody have a second choice? Any of them, if you need to? Any of them? All right, then let's look at then the Monday, the 27th as the second choice. Ideally, it'll be the 24th on Friday, so that'll give Dr. Boyd a little bit more time and the staff. All right, let's do that. Okay, the 24th then will be the planned works. I'll let you know, Dr. Boyd, what Ms. Gonzalez says, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's give Dr. Boyd a hand. That was a lot of work. All right, now let's look at some of these action items. The first one is JHCD-R, Regulations on Administering Medication to Students. Let's look at that one that was discussed at the last board meeting. Any comments about that? It is a regulation. If I can remind the board, and I know most of us probably realize this, that a regulation primarily has to do with the superintendent. He usually presents those. And then we, in the, it's been our practice here, I noticed in the last year that we actually will vote on those. However, it's more of an FYI because it's the superintendent that makes sure that those are being complied with and they relate to the regulation. So then this one, any more comments? I know we discussed this a little bit last time. It mostly has to do with, besides a doctor, there are other officials such as nurses and other division people that can administer drug, excuse me, any drugs, and that's primarily what it relates to. Any comments about that? Or, Dr. Boyd, since it's a regulation, anything you want to say about it?
Nothing additional that has been added since last time. I'm just hoping for action on it this evening. I've vetted it with school board staff and I think we're in a good position in, in moving forward.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept that? Microphone.
It's on. Sorry, can you hear me now? Now. Thank you. Notice it's in the right position. with the recommended language as provided.
Excuse me, I, I think it's the action item, Ms. Hawk. It's the one above that, the JHCD-R. That's the one we're doing first. That's okay.
I'm sorry. The JHCD-R. Recommended.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Wait, question? Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Just remind me, I missed the last time. So this is basically something from the FDA that came out saying that they wanted
Say that again?
So this is driven by something from the FDA, something that came out from them?
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, this had to do with, what was the term Mrs. Fisher used, therapeutic homeopathic medications. So it's just making sure that our policy references what is now become the, a higher demand to use such drugs and how the school division would, would process that. So yes, we're okay with, with the verbiage in it now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's talking about some herbal medications, which I could potentially see maybe some parents saying, I want the ability to be able to let my students use that. So, I mean, I'll vote to approve it today. I think it's fine. But I mean, if I'd be also willing to hear about more feedback, if parents have concerns, yeah, featured data personally.
Oh, in meeting with the health committee last week, the nurses were very concerned that we be in line with the appropriate regulations for their own liability.
That's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Rolls, for pointing that out. All right, if there's no more discussions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries? All right, let's go onto the discussion items. The first one is JHCF-R, the wellness policy. That was basically from the presentation that was made at the last board meeting, and we said it would be a regulation, so that meant that Dr. Boyd had to have some input on it. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. So if we remember, we had the Y Street present to us really on the topic of providing water to our students. So I do appreciate the opportunity of going back to the school board employees to make sure that we could satisfy what was in the regulation. So I met with Ms. Davis, met with Ms. Fisher, and the, provided a handout for you guys this evening, the red typed verbiage is what we would recommend adding, which is also what Y Street recommended adding. And we certainly believe that after we've talked about it, we can satisfy that change in that regulation. So I'd certainly be in favor this evening if, if the board would like to pass it.
I think there's someone who is from that Y Street organization that wanted to be here when we pass it. So I think for her sake, we might wait till the next board meeting. But any other questions for Dr. Boyd or anybody about this? Ms. Hawk?
Is there any concern about expediency for this, Ms. Davis? Is there any need for action tonight?
I really did think she was going to be here tonight, but I really would like us to vote on this. Right now, from the pandemic to now, the cafeteria has supplied over 148 bottles of wa, 148,000 bottles of water to the students, and we don't charge them. So Y Street has grants that I could apply for to help out with this endeavor of supplying the water.
Okay, I had told her that we probably have the action item on the next board meeting, so, but you think, well, that's okay, though. I understand your concern, and that's a very valid one. We could, what is the board, the, the one who wanted to be here to kind of have a picture when we approve it? I told her the next time, but if it's that much of a concern, we could vote on it. What's the idea?
We can certainly approve it and then have her come back next meeting and, and do the picture and the statement.
Man, I think that the more regular thing is to have it, it's not actually in the proposed regulation yet. And I, I do wonder what would be the effective difference of passing this now, because it's just talking about making sure there's water to be able to get to the students, which there already is, right? The only thing I saw at the end was like letting them carry water bottles. Is that something they're not currently allowed to do?
Well, they supply not just water bottles, and they're really nice water bottles that keep the water cold all day, but they also supply different stations with water. And so they can, not, not everybody's trying to use the fountain, especially in the cafeteria. They could, they have, they're going to have different stations throughout the school for them to continuously fill their water bottles up.
And, and if I heard you correct, Ms. Davis, approving it tonight would allow us to expediate the process for applying for?
Right, they have, they have, these are grants. And so we can, I can apply for them as soon as you approve it. And because the water is getting expensive, but I don't want to not offer it. So we offer it for breakfast and we offer for lunch in every school.
That sounds good.
Speaking from experience, grant, grants go quickly. And I, I think a matter of a week is, is a long time. If, and I suspect, no, Ms. Davis, that grant is ready to go. So I, I would think that the sooner the better.
All right, if it's the consensus of the board, then let's do this. Let's go ahead and we'll do a consensus vote in just a moment. But would you tell her that when she, to come at the next board meeting and we will make sure that she can come up, we can do pictures and all those other things, okay?
Yes.
All right, let's do a consensus vote on this. It doesn't sound like there's any disagreement. Do I have a?
One more question?
Go ahead, yes, if you do.
No, it's regulation, so, you know, it belongs to you, Dr. Boyd, of course. So, look, consulting, you have no concerns at all about the wording as it is?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, let's do a consensus vote. All those in favor of approving the wellness policy, JHCF-R, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Carries, that's consensus vote. Thank you very much. All right, the policy, KBA-E, Rights and Responsibilities. We'd go to that one. I think the biggest change was that Ms. Higgins is the new FOIA rep. Are there any other changes with that, Dr. Boyd?
No, I think last time we just had to make sure that we put King George County Public Schools in, just above Ms. Higgins' name, it said blank, if you remember.
Yes.
So we updated that and have Ms. Higgins' name in there, and I think it's ready to go.
Any objection to also making a motion or consensus vote on approving this one?
You have a consensus.
All right, then if there's no objection for consensus vote, then all those in favor of basically approving the KBA-E, Rights and Responsibilities, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote carries, so it is now in policy. All right, now the next one on the discussion items, Board Salary. Mr. Rolls, I believe you have comments about that.
So we left it last time asking whether I would contact Ms. Ewing with the VSPA to see if she would review the policy as presented. And as I said, I don't think that VSPA does that, and they do not. We would have to get our own legal counsel to review that. And, and so I guess some of the concerns raised before is, what does it say if we do this? And so I guess I'll say the high level first. I think it's important to just constantly apply cost of living adjustments, just to basically keep the pay constant. Otherwise, it's an annual pay cut. And why is that important? Because I think emphasize that local governance is important for both of the school board, Board of Supervisors. It's important to have people serving here to oversee the education of kids and as well as the spending of, we're looking at what, $60 million this year. And so when I considered running for the board, as last cycle, I liked to see what it would take to win, what the past elections have been like, and was a little unnerved to see that nothing, no nothing negative about anybody on the board, but like, at the time, all five sitting members had run unopposed in last election. And I, I just think that's kind of unhealthy. It'd be good to have people lining up to do this job to serve the community, so we can get the best possible people in here. And I'll see, money itself is not the reason that anybody runs for this. And when I shared last time that I talked to people about running, what that would be good. And a few of them almost comically turned around, almost ran the other way, just because they're, weren't that interested. But I just like to change that perception, you know, this is, it's an honor to serve here and it's a really great way to serve the community. And it's a concern that people hear about running and they immediately think, oh, I don't have time for that, I don't want to do it. Now, as I change the, the salary alone, it's not something that's going to totally change that. But I think it's part of the process of changing the attitude and perception towards serving the school board. I really want to see lots of competition for school board seats, for instance, just so we're, we're getting the best. And also, I think this also would show that we can look at a predictable problem and deal with it before it becomes a crisis. I mean, it's not as if inflation is a new phenomenon. I mean, it's not as if inflation is a new phenomenon. We all realize it happens. And traditionally, looking back the way it's worked, is they waited about two decades or more before like, they say, okay, this salary has gotten so far behind now, we need to double it. And I don't think we want to wait till such extreme measures are needed when we can just look right now and say, hey, we can have a common sense approach where we say, obviously, we're applying this call it to everybody else. We could just do the same thing for the board, so it just stays basically effectively the same purchasing power over our time. It just makes sense versus waiting for a crisis to deal with it. I guess my point with that is we, we see that problem. We can deal with it. Uh, as it currently stands for policy, we don't have a single, unique King George policy. They're all V S B A policies that, you know, we, maybe we've taken half a dozen or so. We've changed a word here or there, and but that's it. There's not a single one that's only ours. And I think it's important for us to get comfortable with making policy so that we can be uniquely King George. You look at the, um, the role of school board members as the V S B A finds it. And you do like three things. Just hire the superintendent and manage superintendent, which obviously we recently did, and we did well. Uh, then second thing is passing the budget every year. We're starting to do that now. And the third thing is passing policies, and we're just not doing it. So obviously, passing all of this policy is not the only thing that we need to do, but it's just an obvious easy thing to do. And it could be a step in the right direction to start getting more comfortable with that. So. With that, I mean, are there any specific comments on the proposed policy that's in the packet?
So what are you asking for, Mr. Rolls? And then we'll discuss it exactly.
Well, same thing as last time. Just get a legal review of the policy to see if there are any legal concerns with the policy. And since now we know Ms. Ewing for sure will not do it, so we would ask either Mrs. Haney or Mr. King to review.
All right. Further discussion, Ms. Hock?
Well, I, I just would like you to clarify, Mr. Rolls, in, in the three things that, that we are given to do as a board. Did you say that we don't do policy development?
We just review V S B A policy, and we have, I said, the only things we've done other than just approve V S B A policy as written. So we're the same as every other division is, uh, there's, I think, about a half dozen. I don't know the exact number, but roughly that many that we've made a few edits to, and but not a single policy that is uniquely a King George policy.
Uh, I, I, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Hock.
I, I'm not sure what to say to that. Thank you.
Okay, I think what, uh, Mr. Rolls might be saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, um, most of our policies come out as a recommendation from the V S B A. We might make minor adjustments in it, but generally we pass them. What you're saying is we don't have any policy that's uniquely just from King George, um, the county school board that we've done, just, just ours. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Yes, the V S B A wants to say, well, it's local control.
Okay.
But other than like the odd budget approval, I mean, it's, it's cookie cutter policy, the same as everywhere else in Virginia. So I don't want people in King George just to have the illusion of local control because they elect us, and we're just the same as every other division.
And that's, that's a good point, but let's stick with what is right here, and that's the board salary. So that's the whole piece. So let's just stick with that for a minute. That's a good discussion for another time, though. But right now, it's about the board salary. So any other discussion? We're not necessarily voting on anything yet. This is just a discussion. Um, Ms. Hoover, um, do you have anything to say about that?
No, Mr. Rolls', proposal is very clear. Um, I appreciate the work that you did on it. And I think it probably is something we should discuss further.
Okay. Mr., um, anything else, Ms. Hock? You look, no? Okay. Um, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Rolls, but, um, I think because we are pushing so hard to get these, um, uh, teachers' salaries up to the point that we're competitive, that that is really, even though I know we're not talking about that much money, I think it communicates something that this year and this budget year and this time, that I think that to say that even though it's been many years, and it might be deserving, that we do look at us maybe getting, um, a salary increase. But this particular year, I think it'd be wise as a board, if we can, to let's look at really focusing on those teacher salaries. And I think it could communicate something very positive to the public if we say, you know what? We're willing to sacrifice, even though it's not much, we're willing to hold off on this for after this budget. And then we might talk about it for something in the future. That's my opinion.
I don't know if the two are mutually exclusive. I mean, what if we got the, uh, legal review and we could even put in there something, just because I don't want to get lost, say, hey, this isn't going to affect until January twenty twenty-four. Then effectively, there would be no pay increase until at least, uh, twenty twenty-six. It would be after all of our terms are over.
Could we get that legal review after this budget cycle?
I'll see it either, either way as possible.
Pardon?
Right. I'll see, we could do it either way.
Okay. I would like to suggest, of course, I need to hear from the other board members, that you have a good point. But let's wait till after this budget cycle and then look at that legal review.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Hoover, Ms. Hock?
None.
Okay, if you don't mind, then let's, uh, let's put that on a future after this budget cycle, which would be, um, uh, meeting first of May or April. Just put that back on then. And then that way, it's, it's good communication, I think, with the rest of the public here in, uh, King George County that, um, we're willing to sacrifice that and look at that in the future. All right, uh, board training, uh, board retreat. Um, that was something that I had, um, I think that, yes, that is where we are. Okay. That is something that I had put on. And basically, we're looking at, um, the board training, similar to what we did with the V S B A last year. And I did talk to, um, uh, Mr. Tom Brewster, and he's, of course, one that did that along with Gina. What's Gina's last name?
Patterson.
Patterson, thank you. And, uh, basically what he gave me is a, uh, is an agenda. And I think it's, you can see it there on, uh, some of the board docs when it says for this, I'm looking at the, what the V S B A would be providing, okay? This is, um, Gina Patterson and, um, Tom Brewster are the main ones. And that would be that, um, the four things we would discuss would be the roles and responsibilities, the board and superintendent relationships, building trust, power versus authority, and considering this problem-based scenarios. Um, and then we have, uh, Peter Gorman. And Peter Gorman actually is a, um, someone who does a board retreats, and he has done actually quite a large number of board retreats for different school boards in Virginia. And, um, he would come here, um, to King George. We would not have to leave. And, uh, he's given several dates, but he also, they're similar. He does a few more things than, uh, the V S B A would do. And if you look at that, he does, um, understanding preferences in a work group, governance policies review, that's our norms and protocols, peak performing governance teams review, board protocols, guidelines, self-assessment, uh, school board member self-assessment, communication best practices review, and board priorities. I love the fact that, uh, items five and six is in that he does the self-assessment and using, um, the protocols and guidelines to, uh, to do some self-assessment of us as a board, and then also some individual self-assessment. And, um, he would come here, uh, it's similar as upon a time, he would spend four to five hours with us, and he's done it in many cases. And, um, I did have some, I did reach out, or I had Dr. Boyd reach out to some of the other school boards that used him. One comment from the superintendent of schools at Hanover County Schools said, Dr. Gorman is outstanding, and I would highly recommend him. Six of my seven board members were present for the training, and without any exceptions, they all said it was well worth their time. And I'm happy to expand, um, if it would be helpful. So discussions, obviously, we need to schedule one of the two, either with the V S B A or with, uh, the, uh, retreat with, um, uh, Pete, Dr. Pete Gorman. I think there's advantages, disadvantages to both. What do the other board members think? And even superintendent, uh, what comments?
So I see, uh, the, uh, cost for Gorman as well as, well, yeah, the cost for Gorman. And then I'll see a schedule for the V S B A, but not both for both. Do we have that for?
You mean to do both? Is that what you're saying?
Well, for instance, for under Gorman, it, it says eight different things that he does do, but it seems utterly impossible that we do all in one session. So do we have a, uh?
I asked that, I asked that same question, and he says he can do it. And then apparently, the other division says he doesn't. I, he's got to be extremely well disciplined, but he said he accomplishes all those. He said it's a difference of, you've never done it in less than four hours, and it's never taken more than five. So I guess if I hadn't heard from some of these other divisions, um, that I would say, I'm not sure. But he apparently can accomplish that, and they've been pretty satisfied. Ms. Hock, did you have a comment?
No, I, I certainly, uh, don't know anything about Mr. Gorman. Um, and I, I think, uh, the, the, the idea is, is well-needed. Um, I, I'm looking at the counties, and certainly Fulton County, Georgia is, is Atlanta. And, um, DC public schools, these are certainly large enough school districts. Um, I, you know, I'm certainly willing to look at, at him as, as an alternative.
I, I don't mind saying too, I've worked, or go ahead, personally with Mr. Gorman.
Have you?
Uh, in, in a one-on-one relationship, and he's, he's very dynamic. Uh, would do a, a very good job with this. I certainly would concur with Mr. Gill over in, uh, Hanover, I think it is. Um, I haven't done a board training with him. I've done some other type of mentor mentee stuff with him. He, he is, um, certainly somebody I enjoy listening to and, and taking guidance from. He's very dynamic.
Good. That's, that, that's a good recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Um, Ms. Hoover, any thoughts?
I was just curious, the V S B A, um, training, would that, would they come to us also, or would we have to go to them?
You know, I've only got experience one year, and we went to them. Um, Ms. Hock, you?
We've had, we've had both circumstances. Uh, and there is, of course, a cost differential for them coming to us. Um, but I, I think it could be arranged either direction.
I do know that, uh, Mr. Gorman charges four thousand dollars, and he pays, that pays for everything. Unless he has to spend the night, and he did look at, uh, flights to, um, um, and we had to pay for his travel, travel in four thousand. He did look at flights to Richmond, and it's a possibility, obviously, until we schedule a date, we don't know. It's a possibility that he could come here, do the training, and fly out to that evening. But until we actually have a date, you want me to look, I've got dates for both. Do you want me to mention them? You can look at our calendars, especially now that we just scheduled the, uh, um, yeah, the budget work session, which was either the twenty-fourth or the twenty-seventh. Okay, um, if you have your calendars out, let me, let's look at the, uh, V S B A one first. This would be with Gina Patterson and Tom Brewster. And he has listed February twenty-seventh, March first, March twenty-fourth, and April third. And then, um, Pete Gorman has listed March twenty-second. In fact, his are all the way in March, March twenty-second or the third and fourth of April. He actually listed March twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, but I'm in, I'm in Haiti on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So I wouldn't be here. So March twenty-second or third and fourth of April for Mr. Gorman. And then, um, February twenty-seventh, March first, twenty-fourth, or April third for V S B A. Again, I would, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I suggest we, whichever we choose should be in March because February is a pretty booked month.
I, I think you're right. I agree.
Um, and we need, we need, we need to note that, uh, we have our Eastern Regional Meeting March second. So that probably would not be a good date.
Correct. Did you say March twentieth?
March second.
March second?
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second was what, but we have.
Available.
From Mr. Gorman or from V S?
No, no, Mr. Gorman is March twenty-second and April third and fourth. Tom, Tom Brewster, go ahead.
Here are different.
Yes, they are because they're, where I filled, because he gave this to me a couple of weeks ago. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have mentioned that.
I, oh, thank you.
I, these are fresh today, okay?
Okay.
I heard from both of these today. I know. I'm so sorry. Okay. First, we'll start with V S B A. V S B A is February the twenty-seventh, March the first, March twenty-fourth, or April third. Mr. Gorman is March twenty-second, April third, or April fourth. I would like, I'd like us to look, since we did the, the training with V S B A last year, I'd like to look at this concept of a retreat and him coming here. Obviously, I think it would help for all the things that we have. I know we all have busy schedules, and it would be nice to someone to come here. I know V S B A might do that too, Ms. Hock. That was a good point. But I especially like the idea of this self-assessment, both as a board using the protocols and also individual assessment. I.
I'm certainly interested in either one, and, um, a new voice is certainly always interesting.
Good. All right. Can we decide then we'll, um, go with, um, Mr. Gorman? Um, and it will be on April the third then? That seems to be the least amount of conflict. Sound good? All right, April. Oh, okay.
Of course, pending. Pending Ms. Gonzalez's calendar also.
Yes. Are you all right?
April third.
April the third is what we're looking at.
When are the school board meetings in April?
Yeah, I don't have it in my calendar.
Don't.
We have the twenty-seventh is March, and then.
Next one is in the middle of April, isn't it?
Yeah, the next one after that is April twelfth.
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay.
And then April twenty-sixth, March twenty-seventh, April twelfth, April twenty-sixth.
Those are Wednesdays.
They are Wednesdays because the conflicts that we were having in this building.
Oh, that's right. Yes.
And remember, the budget work session is the twenty-fourth, so we need to be sure that's, that's on the calendar. Friday, the twenty-fourth of February. We got a lot of dates we're throwing around. You all right, Mr. Rolls, with that third? Okay. So if we write that down and, um, if we, uh, we'll make the proper arrangements and get ahold of, um, Mr. Gorman. Okay. I know there's a lot of dates. Thank you, board. I appreciate your patience with all that. All right, um, next item on the agenda is, um, the policy B D D H slash K D, the public participation in board meetings. Okay, that was one that, um, I know that, um, I, uh, had asked Dr. Boyd, and let me tell you what this is about. Um, this was about a little bit of a concern that I had. This is a discussion item, obviously. In that, um, based on some things that's happened in the last several years, not just at, not necessarily at this, uh, board meetings, but, um, kind of throughout the country and in the state of Virginia, we had a lot of meetings, um, I don't know if the word hijacked is the best word, but a lot of outside people came in and they wanted to say things when a controversial item came, uh, came up on a board meeting. And, um, I was a little concerned with that. Obviously, we want everybody from that's, lives in King George, anybody has a relationship with a student in the school, any staff member, even if they're grandparents that live in another state. All of those have definitely stake, they're stakeholders. But I'm a little fearful, and nothing has happened. But I'm also fearful that if something does happen or something comes up, that someone, a large group from somewhere else or even another state or wherever would come and, you know, be signing up to have public comment. And I think it's, uh, could be valuable that, um, we would be able to have the authority to be able to limit that. If we don't have anything in policy that says that, it would be hard for us to say, I'm sorry, we're limiting this to only, um, uh, current county members, residents, or family members or staff members. It would be very hard for us to do that if we waited until the problem arises. But if we have something in our policy, I think it would help with that. And we can talk about the wording in a minute. Just thoughts about that idea.
So for example, if someone were addressing the school board about N J R O T C, and they were from Washington DC, um, and they had no relationship, but they were addressing the subject matter that there's a relationship to. I mean, it, I think there are some areas that it might get tedious in.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a very good point, Ms. Hock, and I think that's addressed, oh, my glasses. Oh, sorry. Uh, and I think that's addressed in this, a change that would be the school board chairman. In other words, what it says is just what we stated, that all public comments would be limited to those individuals with a relationship to the school division or residency status in King George. The school board chairman has the discretion to make an ex, well, excuse me, that was my thing. But, um, basically what it says, the school board chairman has the discretion to limit public comment dependent upon the individual's relationships to the school division or residency status in King George County. So what you're saying, that would happen. And obviously, I think any chairman would say, yes, we want to hear from them. So I, it's not, we're not eliminating it, but it gives us some stand to say, if we had a large group come in with protests, we could say, no, this is only going to be for residents. Does that answer the question, you think?
It does. Um, you know, it just unintended consequences is my concern. And, and just we, uh, have we taken the opportunity to look at any other school districts who have this policy in place?
That's a good point. I did have discussions. That's a good point. I did have discussion with a few people at this training I went through. It was new chairs and vice chairs, and I had a discussion with a few, and it did seem that there were some there, but I didn't see their policies. So that's a good point.
Maybe Dr. Boyd could follow up on that for us.
Yeah, would you do that then?
Absolutely.
So we'll keep this as a discussion item because obviously there's no hurry with this one at all. But other comments?
Sure. And so I wonder if it'd help, uh, Ms. Hawk at all if, um, if we added something in here that means it already be true, but just expressly say that the majority of the board could overrule, rule the chairman if, if they were, desire to do that. Would that be helpful?
I don't know that it, I don't know that it needs to be said, but it certainly doesn't hurt to say it, I guess. Not, not being a parliamentarian myself.
You could say, yeah, something about the school board. The school board has the discretion and then that means it would have to be, I don't think we'd have to say the majority. You just say the school board has the discretion. That automatically reflects that the school board would have to be the majority of us. So if we just left off chairman and put the school board, I think that'd probably solve the problem.
I was just asking the question. I mean, I, I'll say it's more efficient for just let the chair handle it potentially.
Well, it would be more efficient to let the chair handle it, but we have a point.
It's also important to note that we're not saying they can't.
Right.
Giving you the discretion. So it's not like we're eliminating outsiders.
And I would say in most cases, we would allow it.
Right.
It would be that situation, you know, there's a large group and then we have no policy. And then all of a sudden, well, you don't have anything written and you gotta let us all speak and so on.
Right.
Okay, um, so we'll look at the possibility of changing, maybe eliminating the word chairman and just putting the school board has the discretion. I, I like that. I think that's wise to do that. All right, we'll keep this on and we'll check with some other divisions. That's a good point, Ms. Hawk, and, uh, we'll look at that. And thank you, Dr. Boyd, for checking into that.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, the next one is the, uh, school bus air conditioning units.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, so again, we talked about this earlier, I believe, maybe last year at this point, 2022. Uh, this was part of the allotment we had for S R funds. Uh, school, school bus air conditioning units, if you remember, uh, in August, we've got some school buses that do not have air conditioning, which get very warm. Uh, so the background, uh, is at this time, King George County Schools Transportation Department has 10 school buses assigned to everyday routes that are not equipped with AC units. Which surprisingly, it's hot in February right now. Uh, we, we would like to purchase 10 AC units for these school buses that currently do not have air conditioning. Uh, my recommendation would be to purchase these 10 air conditioning units for these 10 school buses at a cost of $132,000. Uh, the rationale would be to purchase these units would be to alleviate the discomfort of students being transported to and from school uh, in school buses, uh, that sometimes exceeds 99 degrees. So, uh, with, with the permission of the chair, I'd recommend that, uh, we allot this amount of money for the air conditioning units on the 10 school buses without air conditioning units.
The obvious question is the sooner the better or does it matter?
Sooner the better.
Okay, um, then let's look at, uh, the possibility or the discussion about, um, making a motion right now, if someone would, for the purchase of these 10 air conditioning units, uh, for the 10 school buses for 102, $32,000. Do I have a motion?
We have a little more discussion for?
We will. Well, we can have, I'm?
But, you know, since it's the first time, we just treat it as a discussion item first.
We can. Um, I was thinking that because of the expediency of it, that we might go, because we can still have the discussion after the motion if it's seconded. And then we could still table it if we need to.
Okay. Okay, wants to make a motion?
All right, um, I just, looking at the expediency of it, it looks like it'd be wise to get these. So, um, do I have a motion again? The motion, um, that's on the table, if someone would make it, to purchase 10 air conditioning units for these 10 school buses for the cost of $132,000. Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve the school bus air conditioning units, uh, as proposed for a cost of $132,000.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Roll?
So, I mean, this, I doubt this was in this year's budget, so just wondering where the money is coming from.
This, this is through S R funds.
Of the S R?
Yes. And, and again, to address the expediency, with the supply chain issues and everything else, I think we're getting word that in ordering these now, we would have the opportunity to install them, I think in the summer months. Uh, so we're hoping to make sure that we're, based on the timeline, ready to roll by the time it gets hot in the school buses when we start the new school year.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I agree. I think it would be valuable to do that now in the way costs are rising and also the need to put them in in the summertime. All right, um, do all those in favor of this motion to, uh, purchase 10 air conditioning units for the 10 school buses for a cost of $132,000, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. You see that that's done? All right, um, next one is the, um, the third allocation of USDA Supply Chain Assistance.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we have Ms. Davis here this evening to, uh, cover that topic.
As you know, hello everyone, sorry. But as you know, uh, we are still having supply chain difficulties. One week we can't get bread, uh, we don't get milk. It is just a never-ending cycle. But with this, what's happening is that where we have to end up getting it, it costs way more than what pet dairy is selling it to us for. So, um, that's what the state and really the federal government has allotted this money for, to help us ease our pain with, um, the rising cost. And, um, of course, it enables us to get more produce, um, more canned goods. It's really for vegetables and fruits and, uh, and of course, they've included dairy. So this last allotment was for like 37,000. Here it is, uh, was for $37,016. So I would like the board to approve that so that we can start using it.
I'm sorry, give me a moment to find this.
I feel like in the packet, it's a page 173.
Well, there it is right there. I see it. I'm sorry, took me a minute. All right, so what you're asking for is King George County School Nutrition Department, you've been allocated this 37,000, $37,016.44 from the S C A funds and you would like that to be approved.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion or do you, is this expedient again, or can we wait till the next time, if we can discuss it or?
Yeah, you can wait. I, I haven't even, they haven't, uh, allocated it. They just sent us, um, memos telling us what we receive, we're going to receive. So I have plenty of time.
Okay, so there's no reason, so we can discuss it and, um, we can move into the next meeting. So go ahead, Mr. Rolls.
Ms. Davis, so how's that Eugene spending? You spend a lot of time at the farmer's market buying stuff or? Well, I mean, what it is.
With the last allotment, the first one that we received, we did purchase from the farmer's market.
Yeah, that sounds like a good thing to do. I like that. Fresh, uh, fruits and veggies for the, for the kids. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts? Uh, I don't know if there's any reason we need to push this to the next meeting, is there? Why can't we just, again, less items on our next meeting?
I don't plan to do any research, so I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept $37,016.44 in Supply Chain Assistance Funds for the purpose specified.
Sorry. I second.
I think Ms. Hawk seconded it already. That's okay.
That's okay. I jumped in.
Seconded by Ms. Hawk. Uh, any more discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, just a comment about some of these presentations and I'm sorry, you know, I read this through, but then all of a sudden I was looking for it. Maybe, um, Dr. Boyd, when we see these, maybe to have it underlined exactly what it is. I mean, I found it, but I had to read through it. Maybe just kind of an underline would help me a little bit. Okay, thank you. Okay, next one is the, uh, 2022 Pandemic EBT Local Level Administrative Cost Grant Funds. Ms. Davis again? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis again. Yes, go ahead.
This, um, fund is a pandemic in, in our fund. It is, was set up by DSS. And, uh, what I need approved is we, this has been a hard, hard program. Carla Webb ended up going to a workshop with me when it first started in 2019. And, um, it was so technology and data and DSS had set up the program and it wasn't working. And, uh, and Carla ended up running the class when we got down there because she figured out where they had made some issues. And since then, she has taken this and ran with it and met with other school divisions. And, uh, right now, we still get calls, like we got calls today with people saying that they didn't receive their pandemic, uh, P E B T, which is, um, just, and it's an additional card with food stamps on it. And, um, so we are, it is just ongoing. They're gonna bring it back again, uh, sometime this year. They're working on it to do another installment on these cards. And, um, so Carla has really taken the ball and ran. And what this is, is a stipend. And, um, I can't get the stipend, but they suggest that we give the stipend to the person, uh, who is doing the actual work and who is, um, getting calls all hours of the night because DSS has her number and they are calling her about certain people who are claiming not to get it. And so it's a lot of investigative work, um, making sure people aren't trying to scam the system. We have to supply the names as a school system. And, uh, and then DSS supplies the P E B T cards, not us. But, uh, what I would like to do was, is for, this is our second installment, so, so we can get this set up so Carla can, uh, be paid for all this hard work she's doing.
Okay, thank you. That's a clear presentation. So this is a stipend, she will receive some money because of all the extra work that she's having to do.
Yes.
And it's a stipend that's being paid for by the pandemic EBT funds.
Right, not us.
Not us. All right, again, um, same question as always, is this expedient? It would be helpful to do this now rather than waiting till the next meeting?
Well, I would like for her to start getting one of her stipends for this last K coming up and at the end of February.
Okay, so it would help her to receive the funds, obviously, a lot sooner. Um, I don't see any reason, unless there's a board member that wants to discuss this more. Any questions? Because we could take another consensus vote and just do this now instead of putting it off.
I suggest we do so. Ms. Webb is completely, um, an amazing technologist, um, and already has the jobs of about three people on her desk. And so I think for her to take this on is incredible. So please, please give her our thanks as well. But yes, I think we should move ahead. And I'll be glad to move to approve a motion to accept 300,000, 3, $3,135.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rolls. Any further discussion? All right, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm not pounding this every time. I just need to say motion carries, okay? It's no sense in pounding it every time, not like it's required. All right, um, okay, next is, uh, committee reports. Um, we'll start, um, to, with Ms. Hoover.
I don't have any this time.
Ms. Hawk? Oh, I'll give you a minute.
Let me find my notes here and all my stuff. This is how my desk used to look.
I'll let Mr. Rolls go if he has his.
That'd be fine, yes.
No committee report per se. Yeah, I shall save, but I was gonna save for comments. So, yeah, no, none.
Okay, all right, Ms. Hawk?
All right, yes. Uh, I met with the Health and Safety Advisory Committee, um, on January 24th. And it was, it was just a wonderful meeting. What, what it's, um, I had not been a part of that committee or advisory committee in my time on the board, although I used to work with them as an employee. So it was really, really interesting and fun to get back with that group with lots of new faces there. They reviewed, um, new legislation that, that's coming up in, um, the General Assembly. And, um, there was a good bit of discussion about, um, a workforce grant, uh, in, increasing their, uh, technology and supplies. Uh, and, and there's a great deal of discussion about, um, the need for Narcan availability in all of the schools, certainly from the middle school, uh, um, but, and, and there is training that many of us have been through for Narcan usage. But it's a very essential, um, I guess antidote, um, that, uh, law enforcement certainly is trained in. And, um, so our nurses currently have the training, but not the medication, I believe. Dr. Boyd, you can clarify that. But they, they are looking to have the increased training in that area and certainly more availability of the antidote. Their, uh, new business, they did discuss the, uh, the wellness policy and the medication administration. They had, there's lots of training for that staff going on all the time, emergency training. The Stop the Bleed course, uh, the use of AEDs. And I, I, it was interesting to me to learn that AEDs are updated on a regular basis, apparently. The AEDs that we purchased only six years ago with the grant that I wrote are now completely out of date. And, um, so have, have been replaced and, uh, it's amazing how time changes. Interestingly enough, the concussion protocols came up in the committee, especially with the middle school update. Because apparently there had not been a specific concussion protocol for middle school there is now. And in fact, uh, some of us were at some of the activities this last month and saw the, the staff go through that protocol for middle school. So I, it was good to see that in place. They discussed the, uh, the Wellness Plan up late, update with, uh, sponsored by Ms. Davis. The, um, the, the Virginia Department of Education Heat Illness Protocol is being updated according to V H S L guidelines. And that's in terms of, uh, when activities will proceed, when it got either too hot or too cold for, for both sports activities as well as recess or, or whatever. So, um, they were very involved in that. They certainly need funds and I encourage them to, to send the information up the chain in, in Budget Builder. They are, they're, they're needing, um, things that I don't even know about. Apparently there are things called Polar Life Pods and misting machines that will revive students on the fields. Maybe you guys know about that. I don't. But I'm learning. They, uh, there, uh, there's a lot required to keep our nursing staff up to date and our, uh, nursing situations up to date. So I encourage them to be, to be very vocal in their, in their discussions with their chain of command. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. That was good. All right, I do not have a committee report. I'm still waiting to meet with the Special Ed Committee. I'm looking forward to that. All right, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, um, we are tomorrow halfway through the third grading period. So interim reports are coming home for our students. Uh, it's hard to believe. But in that time period, uh, as well as it being School Board Appreciation Month, it is also National School Counselor Week. So let's make sure we take the opportunity to thank our ca- So let's make sure we take the opportunity to thank our counselors and all of the wonderful and supportive things they do at our schools. Also, I think between now and last meeting, as you guys know, I wasn't able to be in attendance. But within that time period, it was also School Principal Appreciation Week as well. So I do want to take this opportunity to make sure I recognize those folks that are that are very supportive, compassionate leaders in our school division. They're the ones that get a whole lot of work done in an average day and certainly appreciate those folks. I do want to put a real quick plug in for our two community forums. We have got one tomorrow at Machota Creek Marina at 1:30. And then Wednesday, we have one at Gally's Cafe at noon. So if anybody can come out and attend, we certainly would appreciate the attendance. And all of this, many of the things we shared this evening, we could share with you at those events in paper form and hope that you can go spread the word like we we certainly hope we did. And then finally, the only other thing I would add is I want to just give a quick 30-second brief update of the preschool. If you guys remember, part of our capital improvement plan last time around was taking a look at the feasibility of building a new or moving our current preschool. We're working with Mosley Architects. And at this point, the pace of that project is picking up pretty rapidly. We've done a needs assessment. We've worked with Mrs. Wages at the preschool, Mrs. Howard with Special Education, and we've got a really good idea as to what needs to go into that new preschool. We've got that in list form and also kind of a rough draft schematic of that building at this point. What we're waiting for, which I think we'll get here in the next week, is a cost estimate of what that would cost the locality. And I can tell you that in these conversations about the preschool, it's starting to be coupled and paired with the need for a fourth elementary school very tightly. So if you remember in the budget presentation, we talked about some of the enrollments and capacities of the school building. I think there's a lot of folks in the in the King George County Board Supervisors and County Manager that are also appreciating the need for for a fourth elementary school as well in that conversation. So that's where we are with the preschool project right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right, Board Comments. Let's this time, let's start with the students. Jackson, why don't you go first?
Yes, thank you. Upon Ms. Hogue's request last meeting, she asked me to look into the needs of the King George High School band. And I did so. And I asked Mr. Morrison, the band director, if he could provide me with a list of some material or any of that thing that they need. And I have a list, so I if I may, pass it down. Ms. Dr. Boyd and Ms. Ring already have a copy, so. You can, you know, I there's plenty of copies. I do ask if I don't have the power to look at budgeting or any of anything of that sort. But if you are, if you all are able to, I would greatly, greatly appreciate that.
Don't underestimate your power as a representative of the students, okay?
But I I'm not gonna go over all the lists, but it is listed from most immediate that the thing they need to the future needs. And I will continue with my report. Considering that we've been talking about Appreciation Weeks month, it is February, so it's Black History Month. So I would like to highlight the BSU, the Black Student Union at King George High School. Their mission is to serve the high school's campus and community with cultural, educational, and social initiatives in order to build leaders, promote unity, and contribute to student academics and career success. They endeavor to create a sense of belonging, acceptance, and pride for all students in a safe and fun space that allows them to grow and connect with others. This school year, the BSU's float won first place at the Fall Festival Parade. They've held tailgate first fries before football games. And their students have also taken college tours of VCU and Virginia State University. They will be visiting Potomac Elementary to read to their students. They are also hosting a Black History Month showcase on Saturday, February 11 at 2:00 p.m. Everyone's welcome. Their students will be sharing history, poetry, songs, dance, and step performances in celebration of Black History Month. Admission is $3 for adults, two for teachers, and one for students. Barbecue sandwiches and fish, fried fish will be available at the concessions at the high school. And the theater department, they just finished their performance of The Little Prince. The theater department raised another $316 during their nighttime performances of The Little Prince. There is no exact number for this dollar amount that I am about to share. But during their daytime performances that they did, they acquired anywhere between $1,400 to $1,500. And these acquisitions will go towards Love Thy Neighbor, which is their charity of choice this year. And auditions for the Spring Musical just concluded last week, and they began rehearsing. So that's exciting. It is also CTE Month, so February is Career and Technical Education Month. And all career and technical students, organizations, DECA, FBLA, FFA, HOSA, Skills USA, and the National Technical Honor Society. At a joint meeting, February 1, I passed to kick off the month-long celebration. Each of the chapters have special plans throughout the month, feature weeks. Skills USA, this week is Skills USA Week. Their competition team for 2022-2023 school year is our time is now. This means that members have both the tools and confidence to take on further education or employment in their career field. The Skills USA KGS has received a Quality Chapter Award for the 2022-2023 school year. District skills and leadership competitions begin February 24, 25. From the 24th to 25th, they have students competing in additive manufacturing, architectural drafting, engineering, technology, and design, welding, carpentry, and customer service. The National Technical Honor Society welcomed new members Catherine Band, Deborah Fairfax, Chloe Turner, and Ayla Zook. Congratulations to those new members. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. DECA, February is DECA Advocacy Month. KGS DECA is continuing to prepare for a competition with practices and testing for their DECA State Leadership Conference on March 3 through the 5th in Virginia Beach. They're still looking for judges. So if you're interested, please reach out to Ms. Strauss at the King George High School or go to webs. If you if you have any questions, you can ask me. Miss Step and Miss State are advisors for KGS's HOSA, their future health professionals. They currently have 68 members. They are hosting the AHA Heart Challenge at KGHS. They have begun a Valentine Flowergram fundraiser after their KG neighbor Bloomia donated 500 tulips to them. The tulips will be delivered to students and teachers on February 14. They continue to focus on their neighbors at Heritage Hall, walking over and refilling their bird and squirrel feeders monthly. This month, they are collecting personal and personal care products for the residents. In March, at STEAM Night, they will be teaching Stop the Bleed and hands-on, hands-only CPR to our families, both young and old. FBLA is super excited for the month of February. This week is FBLA Week as well. Today was Motivational Monday. Tomorrow's Tuesday Talks. See, Wednesday is gonna be Workplace Wednesday, Thursday's Thoughtful Thursday, Friday, and Friday is Fundraising Friday. On February 14, FBLA students will be attending the Intern Expo located in Fredericksburg. This is a great opportunity for their students to learn about part-time careers and internships opportunities from a wide variety of employers. On the 23rd, FBLA will be attending the district competition at the Dominion Raceway. And then on our February 22 meeting, CTE ambassadors will be giving us information. So we look forward to that. And that is all for me.
Wow. That is extremely thorough. High school's very busy, and you're a great rep. Thank you, Jackson. And Devin?
All right, thank you. So I have three events that I would like to share with you that will be happening, if not happening now, in the near future. So firstly, we have our Valentine's Day School Spirit Activities coming up for next week, which include Candygrams, which started, opened up to the student body today, a photo booth that's accessible to students during lunch, and a Spirit Week next week. Hopefully, there's as much participation in this Spirit Week as there was in the report that I gave you back in December, and I will follow up on this next School Board Meeting. Nextly, since February is Heart Month, the school is participating in the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge. We're aiming to promote heart healthiness and raise funds relating to heart healthiness. We our goal for this year is $1,000. And as of this afternoon, we have almost two-thirds of these costs covered by donations. We have a Hoops for Heart Basketball Tournament next Wednesday for those that donate. We also have something that they called Finn's Challenge, which teaches kids and families CPR. So I thought these were all amazing things that we were doing at the school to promote heart healthiness. And the last thing that I have for you today is the Reading Makes Sense giveaway that the middle school's participating in, where students have a chance to win a $529 college savings fund. So what they what students have to do is they have to read four books from a selection that came out a few weeks ago and a book of their own. Choose a book that they thought was their favorite and why, have a parent and guardian or a guardian signature. And they are entered in a drawing where 14 students across Virginia receive $529 as a college fund. And I believe this was an amazing way to promote reading. And not just that, but to cover some of the costs that come with possible post-high school education. That's all for me from today. Thank you.
Very good. Another thorough report. Thank you, Devin. Ms. Hogue?
Wow. You guys are hard acts to follow. And and we are so impressed. I just have to say that, you know, we've had a lot of incredible young people come through this board. But you're up there right with the top, you know? You might have to get a Grammy or whatever. We'll have to call that award. I have very few remarks tonight. I do want to acknowledge National School Counselors Week this entire week. And I can't say enough about how much effort our school counselors and and I want us to say school counselors, not guidance counselors. They're they're no longer guidance counselors. They are called school counselors. And that's a national, national movement that that has been a long time in the making. So we want to encourage everyone around us to say school counselors. And we want to say a special thank you to them specifically at all levels. And want to encourage the budget process to increase our number of school counselors because we still are below the required or the appropriate number per student. I wanted to add a more somber note, I guess, a reminder that we are all a very fragile community. A message came through this week from the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School of the death of a young woman, a senior at the Glenn's Campus from King and Queen County. Her name is Megan Price, died due to asthma complications. And the Chesapeake Bay Advisory Council has extended sympathy. And Dr. Jason Strong, the director, has met with students and with the families of the county. And again, just a recognition that these 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 lives are fleeting moments, and we should appreciate every single one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogue. Mr. Rolls?
I want to thank the students coming from Sealston to share about the Drama Club and the Running Club. It's always good to hear what's going on at different schools and see if there's just great opportunities to do enjoyable, good things there. And I'll thank our, one thing I'm grateful for is our nice, quiet King George School Bar meetings. So when you come, we have a public speaker. We actually can thank them by name. So thank you, Mr. Staff, for coming and sharing with us about your experiences as a student and helping to make things better here, even though you moved on. So and good luck with everything that's coming up for you. And then commenting on Superintendent's Report, thank you, Dr. Boyd, for going and doing those forums. I think that's a great idea. And actually, I had never heard of Machota Creek Cafe before. So I thought I should go catch lunch there and also catch a good speech. So I'll see you there tomorrow. And I also had the pleasure of catching the play. Theater Department did a great job, as always, and just happened to come across a newspaper article today about the author of The Little Prince. He was a really interesting guy. He's a fighter pilot, flew in at least World War II, if not also World War I. And curiously, he did crash in Sahara Desert and went four days without food or water before he was finally saved. I don't know that he saw Little Prince, but maybe after four days without food and water, maybe he did. But another little interesting factoid in there was that it's a surreal gem. It's been Little Prince has been translated to more languages than any other book besides the Bible. So I appreciate the theater department bringing that gem to us on the stage. And Mr. Bush and I were able to do some chair and vice chair training with the SBA last week. And the SBA did a great job with that, get refresher on parliamentary procedure, among other things. And that was some training we got last week. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rolls. Ms. Hoover?
Well, in addition to all the other thank yous, I would also like to congratulate again Genevieve for her fantastic artwork for the Disabilities Month. I think that was a great effort by Ms. Howard to start that. And visits to each of the schools, the chat with staff, students, and parents are upcoming. I'm currently coordinating the first with Mr. Watson at King George High School. Mr. Bush and I will be having informal conversations with anyone interested in meeting with us. The plan is to visit each of the schools, beginning with the high school. And you can look for information coming out in the next couple of days in forms of flyers. Or I'll ask Mr. Gregan to put it on the King George Community Schools website. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I too am very thankful for Sealston Elementary, for the Drama Club and the Running Club. That was that was very good. It sure is good to see that kind of interest in the elementary level. I also attended The Little Prince, and it was I vaguely remember either reading it or studying. I can't remember. It's been so long. But it's kind of the acting was wonderful. Although the storyline, I said, okay, now what's happening? Where's we? And my wife was very, it's interesting, we had ongoing discussions as they were performing. But the performance itself was really well done, and the the acting was superb. Also, I did visit Sealston and spent about almost an hour and 45 minutes in an art project they were doing. And I was really impressed. They were, I don't know, just doing watercolors and no, I'm sorry, it was oils. It wasn't watercolors and this little tiny canvas thing. And man, they were doing some great work. It was what I really enjoyed about it. It was every student in that room, no matter what level they were at in terms of their educational, their they were all deeply engaged in the activity. And it's like all you could hear was people engaged. They weren't doing anything else, which you know, in a classroom sometimes is is sometimes always not the case. And so it was really great to see that. I was very impressed with them. Also, I appreciate the Genevieve, that that picture just tells a story. And I think that's what was so great. I can see why she won easily because her picture tells a story, and that's great. Also, Mr. Stotts, thank you very much. I almost wish you could be a spokesman on the student level as maybe we go around and talk to the community as far as the need to getting good teachers and the salaries. I think that is it. I'm sure I'm forgetting something. But anyway, I appreciate also, I know it's a School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you to my fellow School Board members. I think that one of the things is that I believe we respect each other, and that is such a key for the running of a school board. And I think that when when one maybe makes a mistake, then the other one is gracious and there's forgiveness. And we move forward in order to for the betterment of the the division and the students of this division. So I want to thank my fellow School Board members. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.A.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment of substitutes, stipends, resignations, terminations, and retirements of employees of the school board, I move we go into closed session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rolls. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. Do we have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D., only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
Ms. Hoover? I certify as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. We are now in open session. Now, do we have a motion to approve the personnel as presented?
Move that we approve the personnel actions as presented.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. They are approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.